This conference will now be recorded.
We're looking at it.
Well, we can keep talking on the phone.
Oh, wow.
And then thank the state of Mexico and lock me in.
You ready? Y'all ready? All right. I call this regular meeting of the city commission order. Shannon, roll call, please.
Dear Roberts.
I'm here.
Commissioner Gandy.
Here.
Commissioner Voe.
Here.
Commissioner Deo.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Okay. Join us in vacation, Commissioner White.
For the name's goodness.
We're failing, all right, all right. If you pray with me. Lord, we just come before you now and I hope that your presence and your power and your might and your wisdom and insight be given to all those that are making decisions, that you would give the proper understanding, let's be able to solve city business. We just pray for your mercy and your grace before now, I thank for each person here. I pray blessings on them, be with us now as we conduct this meeting, may he be glorified in all the decisions that are made, Christ's name, amen. Join us in place.
Please.
And we do a project which is six. One mission, unto all, indivisible, Deo's justice. Salute the black man, save the American, save the temple. Shift among you.
Maybe see. Good job, Commissioner White.
Thank you. Thank you, Brother Dave.
Lord, open, promotion on his agenda. Very likely motion to approve the agenda submitted. We have a motion second, or the any direction, permission, or discussion. Shouldn't be very long. Okay. Shannon, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Deo.
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes. Commissioner Voe.
Yes.
Mayor Voe.
Yes. Just very likely motion for consideration of minutes of June 12th, 2023, and June 22nd, 2023. Motion second on the adoption of the minutes of these two dates. Any corrections, any additions? Any discussion? During that, Shannon, roll call, please.
Commissioner Voe.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Deo.
Yes.
Commissioner White. Yes. Mayor Voe.
Yes. Staff. And Shannon, you have any suggestions this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we should resign, Joe, just sign some papers before you leave, so make sure you don't.
Okay.
Away from me. That's all.
That's it? Yeah. Anything this evening?
Um, no, everything's looking good.
Awesome. Oh, Mr. Jackson, how am I?
Just so you guys know, we are in the process of getting new Exxon body cans in and also new radios for our units, so.
New units, new radios, just for all of that. Any questions? Party, you're happy listening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, so regarding last meeting, I have researched different guidelines and procedures for activating the emergency warning systems. I cannot find any procedures for Lovington. So what most municipalities do is they activate the system for forest tornadoes or any other emergency event that has occurred or could occur that has the had the potential of hazard to life. So examples are winds 70 to 80 mile per hour, hail anywhere from golf ball size and up, any biological or hazmat situations that may occur. And then as the city, we need to decide what we want ours to be, and then, you know, if y'all give me directions and say, I think this is what we need, we put it together, and of course, the commission will vote on it. I've checked other cities, and that's pretty much what most other departments or cities do, municipalities. I have contacted Code Three Services out of Roswell, and they will be here tomorrow. Anywhere from May 30 to 9 tomorrow morning to look at our current system and see if they can get it to where it will work remotely again. I would also like to get it to where LCCA has the capabilities of activating the system like they do for Hoffs. So that's something that I am working on, and we're going to do what we can do tomorrow, but hopefully they can at least get it up to where it will work remotely from the base. Another thing about the problem of trying to get set up is in the INWS, it's a site that will send notifications straight to my phone, and I'm also getting all my, like supervisors on it as well, that way it will send straight to our phones if there's a tornado warning or anything of great significance in our area. So this is running operated by the National Weather Service because they no longer call municipalities and let them know because of today's technology. They don't call anybody, they just send out text messages or emails. So that's how it all works now, so with us getting this, it should send us text messages. So if we're out on calls and we get the text message, then, like I said, it might go through LCCA, but we can get on the radio and ask the LCCA, if they get that capability to sound them off, then we can ask them to sound them off. Or we can get somebody at the station to hopefully do that. So other than that, we are receiving $332,496 from the state fire grant this year. And our firefighter that was in the vehicle wreck, Zachary Cannon crank, will hopefully be returning to work next week. We're not sure yet what capacity yet, whether it be light duty or complete release from his doctor, that's something we're hoping to find out this Wednesday. But he is fixing hopefully to return to work. And then our numbers for May, we had 282 EMS calls, 28 intercity transfers, 22 airport transfers, 113 refusal cancelable DOA, five tail calls, and 28 fire calls. And that is all I have this time.
Okay, Commissioner.
So just in the, just in the event that we have turnover or something in the park, so we get like a written policy, so when the next guy comes through that's already in place or whatever.
That's what I want to get this done, so that the commission can advise me on what they feel that our guideline should be, and then we need to get that put in policy. This is what it is, this is our steps, this is what we do, and that's why I'm also getting all my officers on it as well. So if I happen to be gone, or I'm, you know, I'm on vacation or whatever, I'm not here, then at least they will get it as well, so more than just one person will get that.
Well, I was more concerned about the personnel part of it than.
So most of my officers have been here 10 years or more, so that's, those are the ones I can really depend on, and they're the ones who would be doing it if they were running shift anyways, and that covers all my shifts. So like I said, if I am not being, then the supervisor that's on shift that day, or his lieutenant, whichever would be able to do it. And I have got with Jennifer Lopez, and we are, she is trying to find some grants as of right now, so that maybe we can add to the system instead of just the three alarms, maybe some further south, some west, and east, because of course, when those were put in, the city was a lot smaller. So as the city grows, I think we need to expand, of course, our system.
Have you gotten with Lorenzo, because we have that county wet catastrophic plan in North part of that?
I have, we have discussed as well, and that's why, but each municipality also has to set their parameters, and that's why I'm also wanting to get with LCCA, since they can set the Hoffs system off, I'm hoping they will be able to do ours as well in that case, and then we would kind of coincide with Hoffs and kind of pretty much have the same parameters as Hoffs does.
Well, I'm glad that you're being proactive on this. I talked to a gentleman here the other, last week, had spoken to the plaza, and he was in that last tornado, not the recent one, but the one before, and he had a relative that was killed. He said that three of them left the building, going to the shelter, and only two of them got to it. And I don't.
So I've also, from talking to the National Weather Service, they still have not called it a tornado. They just called it a weather event, that they're classifying to be categorized as equivalent to an EF. So, but they have not classified it as a tornado, they probably will not. And of course, you know, with where that was, you know, four miles out of town, even if the alarms had gone off, it, you know, way out of town, so. But I do want to have it ready for if it ever does happen.
Questions, Jenny? Uh, one question, and I know we're getting the cart before the horse right now, but if we can use LCCA, then, you know, it would be good that if they are the ones that are going to set it off, it would be great because then whoever called it. Let's just say it's on an afternoon, and there's no clouds in the sky, and they're putting it off because of high winds. You know, we need people to be able to call someone to determine, is it, are we testing on that day? Is it for high winds, is there a tornado coming, is there hail coming, you know, we can give a reason.
So, and I've got some, you know, stuff here. One, it talks about like Hoffs, their warning systems, it says, do not call 911, because then it ties up the lines at the emergencies can. If you hear a siren going off, that means get in out of, take cover, whether it's hail, wind, rain, tornado, whatever it is that they're sounding that a system off for, it means get in, don't go out and look, get in, find shelter, take cover. So, but that is, and also in that's, when we put it together, whatever we decide, if there will be also, you know, like this one says, you know, do not call 911, this is what it will be for, whether it's golf ball sized hell or whatever. And then in there, it will also say, you know, if we decide we want to test sirens like the first Wednesday of every month, or if we do it every other month, however we decide, it will stipulate in there so that the public will also know, okay, I know, first Wednesday of every month, depending on what the weather, if it's that weather, of course, we're not going to do it. But if weather pending, we are going to test these systems every month on this date at this time.
We want people to respond, but we don't want them to be responding unnecessarily, because then they'll quit responding.
Yes, 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 sir.
Now I'm getting paid for it.
Well, we're going to skip, and it's not against you to skip, but, city manager, get a target date, of course, listen to some action, I've been hearing this for years, so. You know, we ain't going around circles on this all, that I just want to target date when it's going to happen, and it needs to happen, and not against you to skip, but you know, before administration, before I get here and.
Y'all are telling me you want to, not have it done.
Well, you do decide, because you're the one.
Well, but I need y'all's input as well as to, this is what we want to see, and I could put together something, and then I want y'all's input, I can email it to y'all once I get it together, I can email it to y'all, and y'all can tell me, hey, maybe we need to add this, let's take this out, let's do whatever. And then at that point, once we get it together, I'll present it to y'all in the commission meeting, and y'all can vote off.
I think the most important part right now is just getting them alarms going.
And that's why I have.
This week, just discussing our next meeting, or the next, after you gather all your information, but I'd like to see it done in 60 days, we wrap it up, and we know when, because of the season, monsoon season starts right here in July, so.
That's, that's another reason I have that company, and they are coming tomorrow. They told me they will be here tomorrow, that was the date they gave me, so.
Thank you.
Anything further? Commissioner Bol.
I'd like to thank y'all for coming. Want to put out there as far as my local, shop local, and eat local. Appreciate if you guys do that. Speaking of eating local, had someone contact me about wanting to put a restaurant, put a restaurant into Lovington. They said that, the sales of alcohol on Sunday. With that being not changed, he said that it would be a, probably a nonstarter for them to come in. And I did a little bit of homework, New Mexico Liquor Control Act was updated, you have a 921, which I believe calls for an update to our ordinance. I believe the state has removed the restrictions on Sunday's sales in restaurants, except in Kinley County, that's what I read. So be able to do a little bit of homework on that, and they're reading up and see if that's the case, and I'd like to have that as a discussion.
Yeah, and I think the only thing is, is because it's a local ordinance, okay, we'd have to remove the local ordinance. I think statewide, you're correct, but it's a local ordinance, and so we have to remove that.
Right.
That's, that's the only thing we'd have to, I think that's the only thing we'd have to do.
And as a discussion, I can talk about that, and see if that's what we want to move forward on.
Yes, sir.
Also, last Thursday, I brought up, think about the water. We just had issues after issues, and I said, it's affecting our residents, it's affecting our hospital, affecting our businesses, affecting the county, we all have buildings here, we all have, I said, mostly the residents. I'd like to see about us getting a plan together, as far as updating our water system.
Yes, sir.
Our infrastructure, I know it's going to cost money, I know it's going to cost a lot of money, I know we're not capable of doing it ourselves. In the municipal reporter book here, page 17, there's a lot of grant resources.
I did send that exact page to our granters.
Right, that can be looked in, and I want to, as David just said, we've heard a lot of stuff about in the past, I don't want to be a commission that sits on our hands, I want to be a commission that gets our ass who does something. So I really want to move forward on this, because I feel that affects everybody, even though it does. You know, if the water goes down, the hospitals have problems, the water goes down, the restaurants, you got a fire department, you got a new state of the air car wash coming in, that with the issues that we're having, are they even going to be opening their doors? So I said, we know we're losing quite a bit of water. We have to find out where it's going, hold the people accountable, and I want to really move forward on this.
Yes, sir. I'm going to address some of that in my staff comments.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Deo.
Yeah, chief, I didn't know if you heard any complaints about somebody getting naked in front of the city hall. It was.
What, you?
I had a hand inside my shirt, and I ripped it off, and it was four times before I got my shirt off. And I, I know them cameras are going across the street, I was like, there's a button up long sleeve shirt in there, it was all button up, and I was trying to get it off, it started at the bottom, ended up on top, about four times, I couldn't get my shirt off, man.
Did the police department respond?
No, they didn't respond.
Thank you, thank God for slow response. Like this to me, I feel sorry for that name.
Yeah, yeah.
Everyone did have it. There was a guy, I'm sure, in front of the courthouse, but he wasn't making it. Then I'm taking him off.
Why, I had the water hose in my hand, that's a bad part, but I was, I don't know why I kept holding on to the water hose, trying to take my shirt off. And then I climbed up the water hose, held my shirt like that, and it started biting me all the way in, I was trying to take a shower, sir.
We're under water restrictions.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, there's some poor neighbor, see you on the phone, check.
Yeah, yeah.
Get to the appropriate, whatever.
Because I saw some cars, I was like, man, this is a bad time.
That's all right, thank you, sir. Commissioner White.
I'd be proud of that.
Right.
Thanks for being here, and again, thank you, Brother Dave, for praying for me.
Commissioner Gandy. Yes, ma'am. A new face.
Mayor, commissioners, the DFA opened the portal for a search of the final budget, so whatever final budget we come up with, we'll start trading tomorrow so that we can have it done there.
Awesome, that's good.
That's all, which is nice.
Okay, any questions? City manager.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, member of the public, members of the public, we have a packed agenda tonight, so I'll try to keep it brief. An update on the water situation, our levels built steadily over the weekend despite the heat. As of midday today, storage tank capacity was at around 12 to 14 feet, which is up from five to six feet last Wednesday, when we experienced loss of water pressure. I'd like to thank those citizens who made voluntary cutbacks to water consumption. I was contacted by a member of the Economic Development Commission over the weekend, and he proposed the idea of using some LEEDA funds for the drilling of new wells, or to further improve our existing wells. I believe that's a great idea, and kind of that creative thinking to help our situation in the long run. Additionally, I have instructed our grant writer to focus our energies looking for water development grants. I have also reached out to a state senator in hopes for future capital outlay grants, because as you said, sir, how can we attract economic development if we don't have the infrastructure to support that, whether it's wastewater or freshwater? We've got a car wash opening, we've got a supermarket, we've got new apartments, we've got a fast food restaurant, all those things, either freshwater and wastewater. So these things are vital and need to be considered both short term and long term. Going back to what Commissioner Gandy said at the last meeting, shocking thing I've learned is that figures taken from 12 wells today show that we are pumping out water at a monthly rate of 106 million gallons. We will recheck our consumption figures, which were stated to be only eight to 10 million gallons per month. This situation merits further study and analysis, considering we may be losing so much of our water that we pump. As of right, as of right now, we have no explanation for this. And I went over those figures with the, with the mayor, and we're pumping out 106 million as of today's daily rate per month, and we're using eight to 10 million, so we need to account for 85 to 90% of our water. I'd like, secondly, I would like to thank Commissioner Bolz for pointing out in an error in the budget concerning the wellness benefit. It had been assigned to each individual department, where in reality, it's under the finance department, so that correction saved our budget about $31,000, so I appreciate that, sir. Jason Boynton from Parks and Rec advises that in preparation of the Fourth of July, a party in the park, Chevron Gates, will be closed Monday, July 3rd at 6 o'clock in the morning, through July 5th at 6 o'clock in the morning. Fourth, I have an appointment with the Maddox Foundation on July 12th to review all existing amended grants with that organization. I feel it is very important to maintain a great relationship with this organization, as they have been so generous with the city of Lovington in the past and present. Finally, last Friday, our acting director, Tracy Espinoza, submitted her two weeks' notice. Mrs. Espinoza is pursuing an employment opportunity elsewhere. Tracy has been a dedicated, hardworking member of the city of Lovington team for many years, and we wish her well. We will post for the finance director position tomorrow on approval of the budget, and we will post for an accounting clerk position tomorrow as well. Besides finding an auditor, finding a finance director will be my top priority. In the short term, we are making internal adjustments to assist Melissa in her financial duties, and this may create opportunities for advancement for our employees. I would like to relay a proposal to the commission made by Ed Fierro, and he had made this proposal even before the news about Tracy Leal. Ed's contract is ending at the end of this month. He presented us with two options, we can continue to use him on an as needed basis, or he proposed having two, three month contracts back to back for a total of six months, where he would be a full-time in-house finance director, while not retaining that official title, but in effect, he would be our finance director. He would live in Lovington, be available in-house to train our personnel, bring us up to date with our financials, and help with the transition to a full-time permanent finance director. The fee would be approximately $168,000. Bear in mind, we won't be paying Mrs. Espinoza's annual salary rate of $75,000 during this time, until such time as we find a permanent finance director. That added with Ed's present consulting rate somewhat softens the bill of this cost. All in-house personnel feel strongly that he would be a huge benefit until we can get past this transitionary period. Other options may be to seek local accountants, and I've reached out to a firm in Lovett, which is licensed in New Mexico, that does both auditing and accounting work. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions from the commission.
Question.
Can we bring that up as a discussion on our next meeting?
Yes, sir. Thank you, city manager. Ms. Ball.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioner, so Avenue B, the NMDOT and Constructors Inc. has decided they're going to wait till after the Fourth of July to swap it, just so they can finish up, and we don't have that problem with the new detour right at the holiday. So they did say the 7th would be their deadline to have that moved, and Main Street will then be closed from then on, and we'll start with that new section. Avenue K.
Okay, I know everybody's excited.
Since we're in road construction, let's talk, just once we close that Main Street out, what is, is the DOT going to do with the lanes that are coming through here? Does it seem like there's a pretty heavy truck? They had Hoffs up toward Saturday morning, which is the downtown, so what is, what effectively are we going to have to do with that garbage?
The traffic?
No, well, no, he has a. Because Main Street had that problem like this.
Yes, they did, during, actual during the event, so one time, we did have to, during the event, the Main Street director had to move things for them to go through, and then the next time, they were caught at the south end of town and detoured down Commercial and made their, I have asked in the DOT, the local, so I'm, who, if you might have been at the last meeting, but I did ask them to get me a contact of who gives those permits now for those large trucks like that, so we can get something stopped on that, because those, they don't need to be coming down Main Street infested. And when we have Main Street closed down, they won't be able to, and then they can't turn around.
It's going to be the issue, because on commercials, you go down Commercial, we have that concrete area, and then the concrete center median, I just wonder if there's somebody else coming to take that stuff out so they can get through there, because those trucks can't turn through that sharp radius. I mean, I don't even know what the length of that trailer is, it took me 15 minutes to drive by a truck Saturday, so.
Well, I know the lanes have been going straight through, they haven't been turning out.
Well, no, because they can't make it to the north end.
Well, they actually did make it.
They did. You have to take signs now or what?
No, they made it.
I wonder why the state didn't make them do that all the other time.
I don't know. But if there's anything we need to clear out the corner, I'll look at that, too. Because I know we do things that, they're actually the property owners, even though they're in our driveway. We should have moved them a long time ago. I'll look at that. And then Avenue K, that little area where it's bad right before you get to Commercial. They're going to do that this, this week, actually. It'll be Thursday and Friday that we'll get. They gotta take out the concrete. I lost the word. They're going to take out the little concrete gutter, replace it, and then they'll pave up to the actual Commercial Street Edge. Anything for me?
I don't know if you were done.
I am done.
Any questions? All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Mr. Cox, welcome.
Thank you.
How are you this evening?
I'm doing well. Thank you. How about you?
Very well.
And I have nothing.
And you have nothing, but you are available for?
I am available to answer questions.
Absolutely. We appreciate it, sir. All right. I, I don't have anything other than I would like to, again, thank you everybody for coming. As you can hear, I know the water this past week was, well, first off, an eye-opening situation. We do, after several discussions, we believe we have plenty of supply. So it's just a matter of getting it to the city appropriately, so that hopefully that will help everybody's peace of mind, and we will work diligently on that. But we appreciate your patience on last Wednesday. As you heard, we are greatly increased our, greatly in form of supply at this point, and we're building up, so hopefully we won't have that again. As this moves on to our public comment, the podium will be open. We ask you to come up, state your name. Give us your input. I asked you to keep it three minutes less, and we are now open for that. And my, oh, I was going to commend you on Smoking on the Plaza.
On behalf of loving Main Street Mayor Commissioners, I just wanted to give an update on the 12th Annual Smoking on the Plaza. As you guys know, we moved the event back around the courthouse. We received a ton of compliments from not only vendors, but also attendees. We ended up having 32 vendors, which is six increase from last year. Thirty-four IBCA contestants, which is a five increase from the year before. We had five kids cube cookers and about six to 7,500 people in attendance on Friday and 3,500 on Saturday. Our social media ads reached over 100,000 people, with about 5,000 of them actually going for our website this week. So that was really cool. The event itself, just honestly, as part of our report, cost us $116,000 to put on. Most of the expenses were definitely from life entertainment. Getting Pat Green and American Aquarium are a lot bigger asks, but they also require a lot more in terms of soundstage production. So that really took a big chunk of it. And then additionally, we do provide a skating rink for party kids as well as other activities for our community, and that also has an additional cost that may incur. This, of course, does not include volunteer, any kind of donations or anything additional that did not have a monetary number attached to it. We would like to say thank you to PD, Parks and Records Department, as well as all of the different businesses that helped us put this on. It really does take a community's effort together to be able to pull it off. We are super grateful for Lovington High School. They provided lots and lots of volunteers to pick up trash. GWC did Polly cards. We had legendary B&amp;B select services. Honestly, everyone, Cornerstone, Baha Group, so many different people really participated and helped us with it. We had, one of my fun comments or compliments that I received was from Trinity Farms. She told me that a customer told her that they are living in Amsterdam and came to visit their family in the US. They rerouted their three-week road trip to see Pat Green and stopped by at Smoking on the Plaza. They were extremely happy about having a barbecue and a free concert, and they could also not believe that in our small town, we were bringing on something that big. So that was really cool. I stand for any questions, comments. You may ask.
I just want to say thank you very much. So thank you.
Thank you very, very much. And all of your board, all of your staff, all of your volunteers, not just you.
Okay, so really does take a village. We suffice, the shared department was out there. Helping PD, we're helping us trying to figure out cars that were parked in illegal locations and giant propellers coming down Main, so it was a lot of fun, but honestly, we got tons and tons of great compliments, so.
I won't send you a bill for the late night opening. Anyone else?
He told me to turn it on.
Oh, I thought it was your phone.
No, that was just pre-meat.
It was pretty good. Thank you. We'll have to remember that we're doing that again.
Yeah.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Anyone else before we move on?
I think somebody else will go.
No. How are you?
I'm good. I just want to give you all that's getting on everything I'm doing, which is a lot. I'm getting calls just like every day. I give you all the long-term, the senior citizen one, and I still put Evelyn today on that for the matching funds for that. I've already started on recreation one. We spent two hours at the park. That rent's coming up and it's all just good jumpstart on. We, we were there with Jason, interesting manager. We had a contractor there and a landscaper. Just seeing what all needs to be done, what's on Jason's wish list, so we spent two hours there. I spent a quarter to half, almost two hours, half wastewater, seeing everything. I haven't had Robert taking it through everything. To see what all needed of that.
Didn't have you get in the water.
I felt like Eric Brockovich. It was really, it was crazy seeing it. We don't see it from, you know, you just don't see it from the, you know, from the streets and stuff. So it was really neat seeing what, what I'm working for, what I'm trying to get done, you know. We also have, I talked to Skip as well. So yeah, just every day I'm working on something. Somebody's calling me, I'm having people calling me about any more restaurants here, somebody wants to do another daycare. So I'm talking to Evelyn about that, too, taking them to her to see what we can do with that. I have Tatum reaching out to me. I'm like, okay, let's, let me, let me help Lottie too first, and then, yeah. Yeah, but it's, it's a lot of stuff going on. Stayed out in the, out there in the heat, but we're getting it done. I don't know if they have any questions on anything. I do got an office here now, so we're going to get it cleaned out and stuff, so I'm going to have lots, lots of stuff, especially the CPG, and also that's on the resolution now. So if y'all wanted to go towards wastewater, do wastewater, $750,000 grant. It could do some help, but we also have another sidewalk one coming open to go along with that one, the brand. So we have work coming up here in July. So I just want to hit the ground ready with them. That's why I'm doing all this research before. When it comes open, I can just hurry up and apply for them and go on to the next one.
Jennifer, the one on the action item tonight is for the sidewalks between, on Second Street between that and the D Central, right?
Yes, and Crystal has some stuff with that, for that on the application. A lot of everything we're doing, so.
Jennifer, I can, on matching grant funds, just make sure you get with the Intern City Manager to ensure.
There are many ones. We just, there's so much that needs to get done.
I don't want us to go get overwhelmed in matching grant funds, and we got 200,000, 300,000, and we gotta make adjustments. Yeah, that's what we gotta come up with. I think we need to, you know, make sure that everybody's in.
Yes. And I've been talking a lot with Mark from the pub, and she's helping us get matching rents that we don't have to, some of them that we don't have to go through the city or, you know, or anything like that, DFA rents and stuff. She would be a help. We're awesome.
Yeah.
Yes. And I'm talking with people from Santa Fe, for Asian Long Term, Rebecca and Gino. A lot of phone, a lot of legwork and phone work to get before they even come open. But I think that's it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Last call. See no one coming up? Moving on. Bring us to our non-action item. Is he here? Mr. Green, I'll just give you, because I also asked it to be on there, but owns an RV park in Lovington. And and it's, I guess requested the, what I got from the short conversation we had out in the lobby was it was basically on the engineer stamp, the engineering that is required for that. So I asked Ms. Ball to give kind of a, do a quick historical on how we got here, what's happened in the past few years, once the ordinance was announced. We gave them a time of, so many, I'm speaking for you, why don't you take over it?
So Mayor Commissioners, the RV ordinance was enacted back in 2014. So when I came on board in 2016, it was two years into its new phase. They had given, so the commission, when they adopted that, they had given all the existing parks up to 2020 to come up to the new code. So I gave them over six years to come up to code. So in 2018, we started putting out letters saying, hey, you, you still need this, this, and that. Come up to the current code, just try to remind them they needed to do this, needed to do that. Well, 2020 hit, and there was very few parks that could have done anything. So then 2020, we hit it pretty hard, and we had several parks that then, then did step up, do the things to get compliant. The main thing that most of them were missing was the engineered stamp drawings. So the engineered drawings give us the actual park on a plat, shows the size of the lots, the size of the easement, so that way we can make sure everything's where the utilities are. It's better than just somebody drawing a hand-drawn one. It's more accurate, right? But I had many, he grasped that his big concern, not correct, his big concern is that he is a very small park. But I have other small parks that did do this. I have other small parks that also just shut down, and they said, we don't want to do that. And that was their tools to shut down. So this year I have gotten with code enforcement, and we are going to pretty much start citing them for not having a proper license because we're not licensed, we're not giving them a license to operate this year if they didn't meet all the code requirements. There are some parks that have said, we're getting this, we're getting this. They have most everything they need, but they just need a few small things, like their space sizes. They've got to adjust so water and sewer tap connections to make those sizes fit the code. So we're working with them on those, and the ones we're working with, we will continue to work with. It's the ones that flat-out deny doing anything to match code that we want to shut down.
What are our, what are the findings? What is the plan of action? And I'm not speaking for the ones you're working with, but what is the plan of action for the ones that are just giving you no response?
So it would be basically code enforcement. We'd go out and give them citation for operating without license. They would have to go to a judge. Judge would set that, that fee and that fine, and they could be cited daily for operating, for having RVs in there, people living in there. They could be cited daily every time it's a reoccurring event. So that's where.
Those little bargains.
Yeah, they're too close together. That's why we had come up with the space requirement. The spacing was too close together. They just have them put in there one after another.
How many parks are there?
I have the list. So I have one, two, three, four, five, six parks that are, no, seven, eight, nine, 10 that are passed. They have, they passed their. I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven that are not not fully licensed, but they're not supposed to be operating.
So they're being compliant?
They are not compliant.
They're, I mean, how close are some of them to be?
Some of them are close. Some of them, like I said, just need some small adjustments, and we will work with those. The ones that are flat-out not, haven't done anything for years, I mean, I've been working these RV parks since I started here. So I have some of these RV park owners that have never done a thing to try to come in and comply. They've never come in and visited with us about what it would take. And then I have others that are, you know, they're still trying. So yeah, the ones that just aren't trying to do anything, I think are the ones we need to try to get shut down.
City manager, I would say that they're doing this homework. Put a date to it, and maybe let, let those, you know, post something for them. I don't know.
We've sent letters. We've sent vendors' letters. They have been notified. We are going to send another round of letters, and then we're going to get with code and start doing them.
It's like anything else with code enforcement. We're not looking to be a burden. We'll work with people. I understand, basically, we're asking people to obey the laws that are already on the books which were passed by the commission.
Absolutely.
That's all that I'm asking for.
Well, the gentleman that asked, who I know very well, is not here, so I'm not here to speak on it if you have or whatever. We're getting the news out there, and I'm telling them where we're at, so.
Yeah, and I just, he, he wants me to change the ordinance, and I'm like, the ordinance doesn't have a problem. And the thing is, is that other parks have already shut down because they didn't want to do the engineering. And I do believe that would cause the city a lot of heartache if we.
Well, we can't ask everybody to do it. Of course, shouldn't do it and then forget it all.
That's right.
That's, that's the problem. Not a problem. It's, it's where we are.
It's where we are, and we made the code, everybody adopted, and the ones that are following it legally will be okay to keep operating.
Okay, brings us to our next action item. I mean, excuse me, non-action item.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners.
Sorry, go ahead.
Our next non-action item is a review of our fiscal year audit July 1st, 2021 through June 30th of 2022 by Dionne Willbe, which will do that by Zoom.
I'm here. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
We might have to turn it up a little bit. Fair weather, Ms. Willbe. Appreciate it.
Okay. If you would, turn with me to page five of your audit report. This is your independent auditor's report. It's been reorganized, reorganized this year, and it has had several paragraphs added to it. But the beginning of it says, in our, we, we audited you. So there's three levels of services provided, an audit, a review, or a compilation. So the first paragraph tells you that you've been audited. And the second paragraph tells you our opinion. It says that the financial statements, which is the entire booklet, is fairly presented. And that is our opinion. These numbers are yours. They're your responsibility. We can't change these numbers. We can propose adjustments to your general ledger, but these are your numbers, and our responsibility is to give you an opinion or give the public an opinion as to whether or not the financials are fairly stated. You did receive what's called an unmodified opinion, which is the best you can get. And that means that everything is good. You could have gotten a qualified opinion, which means everything's good except for something. Or an adverse opinion, which means the numbers are not fairly presented. Or a disclaimer, which says, we don't know if they're fairly presented or not. So you did receive an unmodified opinion. If you look at the State Auditor's website, you'll see your audit has been published, and it has that word, unmodified. So I wanted to make sure you understood that that is a good opinion. Beyond that, it talks about your responsibilities for the financial statements and what our responsibilities are as the auditor. Our financial page section begins on page nine. Our financial page section begins on page nine. This is a snapshot of the financial position of, of the city as of June 30th. On that day, you'll notice we have two columns, governmental activities and business type activities. The reason there are two is one is not-for-profit, you're a service-oriented organization. So the first is not-for-profit, however, the second column is, and those are your utility funds. You are, are to charge enough in fees in order for this, these utility funds to make a small profit and to be able to construct new systems, et cetera. In our governmental funds and our business type activities, we ended the year with 5.7 million in the bank. We had the next largest or the next asset of concern is our receivables, 3.6 million. You had some restricted cash, which is mostly for construction. And we had net capital assets of 37 million, giving us total assets of 53 million. We had deferred outflow of resources, which is directly related to your pension plan, your PERA retirement plan that you provide for your employees. Accounts payable, we had long-term debts. We also had compensated accidents, repair and replacement liability, which happens to coincide with DOT. And then we had our net pension liability, which was 7.4 million. We'll talk about that in detail a little bit later. But if you'll remember last year's presentation, I was very concerned. I'm going to show you a big swing again in that particular liability. So we ended the year with total liabilities of 30 million. We had inflow of resources, which also has to do with our PERA, our, our retiree pension plan. And giving us a net equity, a net position of 20 million. The next page, our revenues and expenditures. We call them statement of activities and governmental accounting. The very first column happens to be expenses because we are a service-oriented organization. We believe that expenses incurred to provide these services are more important than how we finance those. So our total expenses, which includes depreciation, does not include principal paid. Were 11 million in our governmental activities. Our utility funds were 6.6. We financed those with charges for services. Operating grants, capital grants, and then in the governmental activity column, you'll see some negative numbers. And that's perfectly normal because we have to finance those with our taxes. Mostly gross receipts tax, property taxes, et cetera. So we ended the year in our governmental activities with a change in net position, an increase in our overall equity in our governmental activities of 1.8 million. Our business type activities had an increase of $940,000. So you guys had a really good year. You increased your position by $2.7 million. The next page is fund accounting. It gives you a breakdown. It is a different presentation. It doesn't include capital assets or debts. And it shows cash by funds so that you can, can see how your general fund has come about overall. It ended the year with 2.8 million in assets, only 370,000 in liabilities. Our coronavirus fund is considered a major fund mainly because of that large cash balance that it has. Capital projects is also considered a major fund, mostly because of the restricted cash that we have. Majority of that cash is held in NMFA at the state. Turning the page, you'll see our debt service funds and then our non-major governmental funds. And we'll look at that in detail in just a moment. So overall, total assets in our governmental funds are 12 million. On this particular presentation, again, it's called the modified accrual basis of presentation. We have a reconciliation page on page 13. That gets you from point A to point B with two of the schedules that we've looked at. Page 14 is our statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance. This begins the schedule with revenues. Shows this information by fund. It too is on the modified accrual basis of accounting. So you see total revenues in our general fund of 9.9 million. We spent 1.9 in general government, public safety, 4 million. Total expenditures were 7.7 and again, a nice increase of 2.1 million. Our COVID money. This particular fund, we collected 81,000 in revenue and did not spend any. And we had a transfer out, I'm sorry, we did have a transfer out of 81,000. Let me explain it just a minute. We, whenever we have a federal fund, we can't count the income as income until we spend it. So that transfer out actually triggered the recognition of the income. So if you remember, we had over a million dollars cash in this particular fund. But we offset that. We can't count it as income until you spend it. So it's considered deferred. I know lots of terms hard to understand. I'm sorry. Capital project shows our total revenue of 889,000. We spent a large amount of that project this year, 3.3 million in that fund. Debt services on page 16. You'll notice a large amount paid in principal. That's the refinancing of our building that we're constructing to rent to the state. We refinanced that debt, which was a very difficult transaction. Whenever we tried to trace that through NMFA's records, it, it, it was again, very difficult. Non-major funds in the next column, total governmental funds, 13 million. We spent 21, a large chunk of that was, was the principal that we refinanced. And then you'll notice, if you'll keep sliding down, you'll notice debt issued of 10 million. So we refinanced 8 million and borrowed another 2 million to finish that particular building. We have another reconciliation page on page 18. That has to do with your revenues and expenditures that we've looked at. Page 19 is our budget information for our general fund. Shows your budgeted revenues, expenditures, that you had. Your legal level of budget authority is total expenditures. So I want to draw your attention to the negative number under the variance with final budget favorable and unfavorable. We did have an audit funding because we overspent our budget. The COVID money is on page 21 for our budget information. We too overspent our budget there. Proprietary funds, these are our utility funds again. This time I give you a, a view on page 22. You'll see water, wastewater, solid waste and ambulance. Breakdown of what's going on in these particular funds. And can determine your financial health by fund. My point out that current assets in your water and wastewater account were 3 million and we generally compare current liabilities. It's nice to have double the current assets versus liabilities to determine the overall health of that fund. And you'll notice you well exceeded that. So that is very good. The next page, 23, our revenues, expenditures for those funds. Again, showing each one. We had an operating and income or loss. So our water and wastewater had a profit. Our fees are, are adequate. Solid waste is negative. But this number shows you, we were negative 203,000 is that you're not charging enough for your solid waste service. Ambulance was also negative. That's a very difficult fund to manage because you're so dependent upon the medical industry, which pay what, what they want to pay rather than what you charge them. So that is a difficult fund to manage. And I wish you could increase your fees. You can, but you may or may not collect. The next page is a, what we call a cash flow statement. Takes the same information and turns it into a cash basis presentation. The increase, the net increase, decrease in cash line is, is a line that's most important on this particular schedule. You've increased your cash in your water and wastewater fund by 1.4 million. 11,000 for your solid waste, ambulance about 149,000 for a total overall increase in those funds of 1.5. So although we looked at some negative themes on the previous page, cash basis, which isn't the true picture of a, of a for-profit fund, but you will notice that we had a nice increase in cash in those funds. Custodial funds on page 25. They're minimal at best. We, we did collect 1.4 million. Most of that happens to be motor vehicle department. Our notes begin on, on page 27. They continue for several pages and they're helpful. Want to understand governmental accounting. You can read about all of the different things. I would like to talk about banking on page 36, just because we've had some bank for closures, two of which made the, the news. But there've been many more. There's a couple of reasons why we have some bank closures right now, two reasons. The, the federal government or the feds raised the interest rate quickly. And in doing that, we had these banks that are invested in low income producing investments. So let's look at what, under the word description on page 36, you'll see Burnham, Leo County at 4%, Grant County at 4%. These are some of the higher investments that I see in banks. Some are like 1.1% interest. So what happens is they, they're invested in these long-term investments at a very low rate of return rate and low interest rate. So that if they wanted to sell those on the open market, they're going to have to discount them. Because today CDs are making more money than that. So it's caused a banking crisis that, I know you heard about cryptocurrency. That's an unusual event. Something that your bank is not going to experience. But the reason I'm telling you about this is I want you to know the banking industry is a, it's not as strong as it was once was. I'm not saying your bank is not secure. It is. But I would recommend that you, right now, you have uninsured balance as of June 30th, that's 6.7 million. You're only required to pledge half of that. The bank is only required to pledge it. That means these securities listed below have your name on them. Should that bank close, you're going to go to the banker's bank in Dallas, Texas and pick up those securities. They have your name on them. And you can sell them on the open market and recover some of your public money. But because the banking industry is shaky right now, I would highly recommend that you request from your bank 100% pledged securities rather than just the 50%. I'm recommending that to all of my governmental entities. Another reason the banking industry is kind of in a crisis is because as interest rises, their customers are going to have more difficulty in paying their loans. So again, if, if you would, because this is public money and your responsibility, it would be a, a good idea to request 100% of collateral. On the next page, page 37, your credit union doesn't offer pledged securities. So my recommendation there, if when we read and talk about findings, is to reduce the amount of money held at that institution for the same reason. Well, first of all, it's an audit funding and second of all, we just want to take good care of our public money. The restricted cash held at NMFA, I mentioned that earlier, they're responsible for their own pledged securities. So we don't have to disclose the position of, of NMFA in your funds. We also have a little bit of money at the New Mexico State Treasury. I mentioned last year, I would recommend cashing those out and I would still like to see you cash those. There's such a small amount and it's just another bookkeeping issue that your staff are having to deal with. Beyond that, we have some new things coming on scene. We had to implement Gatsby 87, which has to do with leases this year. Another very difficult, difficult thing to understand and comprehend, kind of like your pension plan is. We have an intangible right to use our equipment. Those are copiers, postage machines, but even you lease out land and buildings. And we also have to consider that over the term of the lease. So some unusual things occurring this year that if you compare this year to last year, you're going to notice those differences. Hard to understand. It's well described in the notes if you, if you choose to read those and understand it. Liabilities are, are described on page 44. Gives you a nice schedule. Beginning balance additions, what you reduced and your ending balance. Lease notes are on page 46, if that's helpful. Then our pension information begins after that. A lot of information to digest if you choose to under, read and understand that. Page 59 is a fun schedule to look at. It shows your pension liability over the, the time that we've had to report this information on your audit. And you'll notice in the fiscal year 15, 14, it was zero. 16, it was 700,000. In year 17, it jumps to 1.6 million. 18 holds, holds steady at 1.6. In 19, it increases to 2.3. In 20, it increases to 2.9. 21 was a huge jump of 3.6 million. And then this year, we had such a positive change. I wanted to point that out. It drops to 1.8. There's some reasons that happen, some of which are your actuary runs two years behind in his study. The report itself is a year behind. And so what we're seeing in our year 22 is our really robust stock market that we had two years ago. That being said, our stock market has not been as good in the last couple of years. So we're going to see that liability jump back up into the, the three and four million dollar amount. Our non-major funds begin on page 67. Their fire, EMS enforcement, next page corrections, gasoline tax, lodgers tax, recreation, our senior citizens, economic development. And then our total is on page 70. They're considered non-major. They're just not as important, so they don't make it to the front of the audit. But it still provides you with all of the information necessary for you to analyze what's happening in each fund within the city. We have our report at the end of the audit. It's called, it's again, an independent auditor's report. It talks about internal controls and compliance. We start our findings beyond that. It talks about internal controls and compliance. We start our findings beyond that. Um, there, there are several. They are lengthy. I went through a great deal of detail in our exit conference that we had. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to address them. But I know this has been a long presentation and I don't want to, uh, dwell on, on it anymore unless you have a question.
I've seen, um, Ms. Willoughby. Ms. Willoughby, I have one question for you in terms of our general fund is at sweep account. You're recommending that we diversify risk in our general fund and sweep account amongst several different banks.
Not necessarily, um, that's not what I meant at all. It's so difficult to manage whenever you diversify among many banks. What I would request is that they, instead of just pledging fifty percent of your public funds, I would recommend that you ask the bank to pledge one hundred percent of your public money instead of just fifty due to the banking crisis that we're experiencing right now.
Thank you. Dion, I, this day.
I was just gonna say again, I'm not saying your bank is not financially secure. I have not looked at the call report and I can't answer that. So please do not misunderstand me. I'm not saying that at all. It's just wise to be one hundred percent pledged at this, uh, point in, in our banking crisis that we're experiencing. I'm, go ahead.
No, and, and this commissioner here, but I, Dion, I just wanted to point something out to the public as well. And you being present, might point this out. So this audit is, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, ending in July of twenty twenty-two audit. Uh, and this year, our, our twenty twenty-three will end right here in July. But I just want to point out one thing. We did not have a city manager for seven months, even though it's a damn good audit, unmodified, modified. I accept it. Uh, we didn't have a city manager for seven months. We didn't have a treasurer for seven months. So I just want to say thank you to the staff of London. You've guys have helped out. You know, you guys helped out. I know, I know this board at the time was hard and I know, I personally was hard on a lot of folks, but you know, that, that year was tough. We had, uh, redid our whole management team, you know, and, uh, but you know, to come away with it, uh, with the unmodified, you know, bringing on Ed, uh, Tracy stepping in, working night and days at her staff, uh, Wendy and, and, and all the staff, you know, from, from the police department, all with, uh, part department, everybody putting themselves together. To end up with the unmodified is just tremendous and it's, and, and it all goes back to our staff. That's why I always want to show my appreciation to the staff because, uh, you know, we, in the year we had money in the bank, we had everything, but I remember when I stepped in and we started making that changes. I didn't totally recall how bad it was and, and we turned it around in one year. We turned it around in one year. And, and, uh, this, this, I know this fiscal year ends next week. Um, so, uh, you don't see how, how far we've gone, but I, 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 I see it even a better, a better audit coming out of this fiscal year because we did make some changes, even at the last, last minute things, but I just want to say that to the public with you being present to show merit that, that, that that's what occurred. And, and with your help too, because, uh, you know, you did recommend being Ed, Ed on to help us because he had a lot of experience in, uh, municipal finance, finance. And then plus being a helper Tracy. So I just want to say thank you and thank you once again to the staff. That's all right.
Anyone else? Ms. Willoughby, this is Mayor Roberts. Uh, we don't seem to have any other questions. I would like to say thank you for your presentation. Thank you for, I know it was a difficult year for you. And, uh, we're glad that you were able to complete this for us. And we wish you, you and your family well. And thank you again. If there's nothing further, I guess this will conclude your presentation.
Very much.
Thanks a lot.
Switch a couple of things.
Go ahead. I'm giving you the time. City manager, while we're taking this break, um, it is very common for, uh, governmental entities to require a hundred percent security match. The problem that you may or may not run into, I'm not here to attest for Lee County State or anything, but uh, the capital of the bank is how they secure that. And so if, you know, since we are building revenue and are building bank account, then that becomes a burden to do a hundred percent. And that is when they may have to require you to take part of it and maybe diversify that to another bank. Uh, that, that's just standard. And then your final option is, uh, the, the state can take that on for you or whatever. But, uh, anyway, something to keep. I'm not, I have nothing against Lee County State. I'm not, neither the, the, it's just they may not concur that verb because it, it will double plus the increase that we've been able to put aside, then they would have to be a hundred percent. So be prepared if you request that. That, that may be what happens. All right. Uh, fixed asset program.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, uh, Mr. Russell Dos from Suter Miller is going to make a presentation along with Leo Wilson. Carleton works as consultant at a waste water treatment plant. And this is going to cover a fixed asset management program offered by his firm.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This year's, happy to be here this evening. My name is Russ Dos and professional, I'm known associate. We're a third largest area in Mexico, the home consumer since nineteen seventy-nine and even full-time. I know what you guys are talking about. Been on your side of the table. I was a city engineer for twenty-five years. And so I was taking care of various things that you are and, um, learn about all things on the web. Black tape presentation, uh, presentation of infrastructure asset management is very timely. Uh, I understand you guys have some concerns with your fixed asset list with the audit. Um, I've encountered some other communities that all have the exact same problem. The fixed asset list has a, an inherent weakness. Um, that when you have a major road project, you say, well, we're going to do the fifth street road project. It's going to be three million dollars. That's this much road, this much waterline, this much sewer line, this much sidewalks, all these items. Well, it's put on the fixed asset list as a project. The intent of that is that when you maintain, change that, basically wrong, you're supposed to say, okay, we're changing this waterline. We're taking out this value and we're putting in a new value. The problem is finance department has no way of knowing how many feet of waterline this is, what you're doing, what's the old value, what's the new value? It's your business all based on project cost with the total depreciation. And so that's the weakness and that's the weakness that every single, uh, community has. Um, Jow started this many years ago. They had the same problem and they had a lot of difficulty. And they finally just said, we're done. We want to start over again and get good debt. And so we had that time we're working on asset management program. Uh, it's a three-phase program we're talking about this evening. And, uh, we've entered the first phase. Usually first phase is water, sewer, water treatment plant. I'm a dresser, so I'm distributed, something like that. And then they said, we're tired. We want to do our, we want to do facilities, we want to do parks, we want to do fleet, we want to do. And so we went on F, we completed the first few phases, we went on, we got all the lines and effectively built the complete asset list. And they said, we want to use this as our fixed asset list. They presented it as their audit, they presented it to the state. And I believe they were the first community in the state that actually has a fixed asset list that is based on real assets, not a conglomeration of projects and things like that. So when they want to maintain something from now on, they go to that asset. It's got one mile, four inch waterline. They can take that out, a portion of it because they have the unit cost and they can change it out. So it, this is asset management, but it's, it's a way to do, uh, asset management plus the fixed asset list that you're talking about. So with that introduction, um, we'll just go through the slides here. Asset management is just a link on what assets you own. You know, it's a, it's a list, where your assets are located, it's used associated mapping. Uh, the hard thing is the condition of your assets, knowing exactly what condition everything is, how to operate and maintain your assets, each, least cost, which also includes, um, uh, purchasing, lifecycle purchasing, lifecycle cost purchasing analysis. So you may, you may not. And how much it would, how much your assets, when your assets need to be repaired, replaced, and how much of the cost to renew and replace your assets. So all these things that we're going to talk about with asset management. Uh, like I said, it's accomplished asset management system and provides the information needed for the D F A fixed asset list. I'm trying to go through this a little bit quickly because you guys have been there all the time. Um, why you asset management? Everyone has aged the infrastructure. There's changing regulatory requirements from water systems, sewer, water treatment plant. Uh, increasing customer expectations. I'd say it's too hard to make sure what the target component hit and the expectations keep growing. Increasing public scrutiny, public resistance rate increases, operating decreasing per static budgets, uh, diminishing resources and trying to do more of existing resources. So you're not alone. This is happening to every community in America nationwide. America's, uh, grade for infrastructure is C minus. They've done a little bit better. It used to be D plus. So higher than the worst. So, and the estimated investment needed by twenty thirty is two point nine trillion nationwide. It used to be three point three trillion. So there actually, there's been a drive to do that. Uh, it was interesting that the grant writers talking about, uh, grants for water system, things, things like that. The best funding source for water system improvements right now, grants, a lot of loans available, grants, is the Water Trust Board. The Water Trust Board, uh, has, uh, funding that they do every year. You start applying, um, in, in the fall. And, uh, yeah. They do grant ready funding, but they really are, this is straight out of their regulations that to apply for Water Trust Board funding. They require that asset management be implemented in a three-year period. So it's not, it's not hard to do. You start phase one and you become compliant. Then you do phase two, and you're still compliant. Then you do phase three, you comply. So you comply for grants every year, even while you're going through the process. Um, and that's the language from their document. Um, this is a formal definition of asset management, coordinated, organized, or wish approach implemented with the single loan to effect official, official intentions, objectives, and goals. Realize your cost effective lifecycle management of assets to achieve value. That's kind of w. What really is asset management? Asset management is not new. Asset management is using common sense to manage assets by skilled managers. This has been done for years. Managers' goal is to provide investors, community, at least cost by purchasing, maintaining, repairing, replacing assets. You just make a long time, make it last a long time for your total cost. So what are the specific things a manager does to do this? The skilled manager actions equate to five core values of asset management. They know where their assets are. They have map, that's current state of assets. They have a list of their assets with the details, how long it is, what size it is, what maturity it is. Uh, that also goes on current state of assets. They know how long the assets are supposed to last, expected to remain alive, their actual age, and the condition of each asset is. And so that's all, all these things are current state of assets, which is the very first core value. And they know what the most critical assets are. This is real critical because this is, this is usually thought about this way formally. If you're just going to inform the road, can't let it break, it's cold down, you gotta park. And those are critical assets. And it's not just a few things. Sometimes things you don't think about. You have to track them down, keep critical assets every year when you update this, which I'm already getting. You run a new critical asset list right before, like, so if something pops up, you can take care of things in the budget. And they know what level of service it must provide to the community. It's hard to hit a target unless you know what your target is. So when you set the level of service, it wouldn't respond within this many hours. We're going to have it broken, we're going to have it fixed within this many hours. We're going to have to respond to people within this hours. You know, all these things. And you have level of service conditions for your water, your wastewater, your treatment plant, or all the things that you're doing. And it's reported on. You have people that track this and you actually report it to the council. So, um, again, you choose every quarter, every six months, you say, oh, this had ninety-eight percent goal. We had ninety-nine percent. This had a ninety-eight percent goal. We had nine. What happened? Oh, we have generated a problem. It's such and such. So you can have real grading and you know exactly how your departments are doing as you go through the process. And you can, if there's something needed, say, well, we're down two footers. Say, well, let's, let's get this up so we get a lot of swings back. Another thing is going to do that in the community that this is reported on. People know, my gosh, he's got consistently getting ninety-eight percent rate every month. They're doing well. And that's one of the problems. When I was sitting here, I never told the story. That was my biggest weakness. I never told the good things that we did. With water and sewer, it's outside, out of line. If it doesn't break, nobody cares about it. So you need to tell the story. That also, that also lets people know that I'm paying for this, but I'm getting good service from my rates. And I want better service. It's going to cost me. So those two things go along with level of service. Okay, uh, skilled manager actions go along with five core values. They don't buy any of your assets based on levels of cost. Back in the seventies and eighties, this is like you're fired, you don't get it. Well, it's changed since then. It's a little more difficult. You can buy the equipment that you like. It's got good service and gives a good life and better value. So that one. Includes all the purchase, own-in, repair, replacement, physical costs. They have a plan to maintain their asset, least cost, offering them life and use a workforce system. Plan work, track costs, check condition. This, this is very important to have a workforce system. So many people are still, some cities are still doing on paper. It's very difficult to report south, to track, to do everything. Yeah, there's inexpensive tools now to get workforce digitally that everyone can check out and report. They know their total revenue expenses, have long-term funding. Make sure that they can operate as successful. Okay, so here's the four, we have four values, current state of assets, critical, critical assets, level, service, lifecycle costing, and long-term funding. In addition to asset management, an asset management plan does something for you. It is extremely important. And you ever had a long-term water employee, you were everything, what, balanced, everything. And then you were told. And people like, no, you think they should know, but they don't. I was, I'm going to go talk to Joe. And they just lie and joke and then he leaves and you're out. And so when you have asset management with the list, with maps, and let's say, well, we're talking about moving through a system where you can actually have your assets on map and you can have a tab with or a phone or something. Call that thing on the field employees and call it up, click on it, fire hydrant, click on that water line. Bring it up, it'll tell you size, age, D, type, everything you need, even sort of you can get by materials, materials from the, uh, the warehouse before you even like to fix it. So make sure you got the right stuff. Don't have to be creative yourselves. So, um, when they have your stuff on, on the computer, a new employee can come in, have all this new scholarships. He knows where it's at, by the way. He doesn't have to have a learning curve trying to figure out what you're changing or what we're doing. So, um, they have all the map, asset management listing, asset information, critical assets, level, service, funding strategy. It's very easy for new management to come in and, and whoever leaves, institutional members are lost. That's what thousands of dollars is that institution. Okay, so we talked about three-phase asset management program. First phase is asset policy phase. And like I said, we do this. So the first place is you have an asset management team. Use it one person from each of your departments. Water, sewer, water treatment plant, roads, whatever you want to look into. And then, um, you train them on the five core values. Then the next part is the current state of assets. That's where you begin to come in and identify all the information on the assets. When I was talking to, uh, Ms. Miranda, that we talked about possibly doing this at one time. We would come in and do the, the training with the staff. And, uh, Mr. Wilson would come up to you and have a separate contractor go in and get the, get the asset information quickly. Give that to us and then we would build, we call it a capital improvement planning tool, which is twenty, which is the asset list. With all the information, there's going to be a diagram on the screen here in a minute. And it will, it will give all the information about it, what we expect to have, remaining live, and actually give you depreciation. And then they'll give twenty-year cost projection for each asset. And it'll say, all the fire hydrants from nineteen fifty to nineteen sixty, they'll tell you how many there are. Um, when you're mapping, you'll call them where they And when you're mapping, you'll know where they are. And then it'll say, you need this much money in this year to replace or repair these. And then you add it all down, you have the total amount that you need, 25, 26, and you can look at it and plan. So that's the, that's the second, we would actually build that with phase one. And phase two is actually getting the data that we would go through and get that document that would be equivalent to your fixed asset list. Some of these other items, finishing out the level of service to critical assets, lifecycle costing. Some of that and mapping will be moved in phase three, as the asset management plan. But this part of phase one, phase two, that we're talking about, it gets you that spreadsheet and fixed asset list. So the five components are here. It's, we just go through the five steps that we go through individually. Current state of assets talks about what, where, condition, legal life. We get the data. And then what we also talk about doing is getting your, I think you guys are still operating on paper maps with water and sewer. And that's not, a lot of people, that's not unusual. But what we would do is we'd take those paper maps, we would digitize them onto a map with the background, satellite background, where all the things are. And then we would do that initially and get that in there, at least where people can call. Yeah, maybe this is provided, we don't really know where the line is in it somewhere. And then later on, they have, they have some handheld devices where you can take your phone and have it stand over the manual, and you can give it for each issues. And then we can make that, make the maps more accurate. So gradually, it's something that's pretty cost effective later on. As long as you have the match where you can see and feel, you can begin to operate, and later on you can add to it. And that's one of those items there that you can, like I said, getting continual improvement. Because that's what this process is, start, you get it in there, you can improve your data, improve your location data, and gradually make it better. This is a.
It's where?
This, that's asset, and this one right here, show that much, well, one, one number two, storage tank, different size. You know, these eight valves, where they're done, where they're located, what year they're replaced, affected what. All that information is on each, it's usually not on each valve, because that would take forever. But when you go back through, you can get information, or generally work on decades. These valves replaced in 1940, 1950. Well, they're one out. Next set of valves in 1950, 1960, when you're replacing, you should replace all of those because they're all past their showtime. Sometimes you have to work towards, you have a valve replacement program or something like that. Ross, is, is a street considered an asset?
Definitely.
Okay, so yeah, it would be. In fact, I'll show you in a minute the depreciated, the deterioration curve. Level of service, we'll talk about this, we have a lot of water system compliance, I don't know, water treatment compliance. You can have each one of those as a level of service. How do we do reporting that? You know, hopefully everything's 100% compliant. But it's not, you know, you'll hear about it, it's regularly, it won't just slip by. And you can be proactive, the whole thing, this system is about being proactive. Reactive repairs cost four or five times as much as proactive planning repairs. You're not after the middle of the night, storms and everything going on, overtime rates, holiday rates. You say, look at the latest schedule on Tuesday morning, close track down the end and out to get the cost of our land. This is all about planning, planning your work. Okay, critical assets, accretions, equipment, system, compliance, number of people potentially impacted by an asset should put it, example, water tank. Big, big maps, so you can, so you can actually, you would actually know the condition of your water tanks, so you can make sure that they don't impact that in your rating and process, safety, equipment, compliance, and then being, the other thing is not that you just replace everything, but sometimes you have to have backup. A backup is some of the best things to do because 80% of assets are designed to run to failure. So when they're designed to run to failure, that's just the last one they can. But if it's a critical asset, you make sure you have it, it's long-term health. You know, especially pump, thousands of dollars, you're just not going to go out and replace it, you know, because you're losing. One, you can make an asset more cost for a year, less cost for a year. So if you can say, we know it's going out, you got the pump right there, and that goes out, boom, you got a ready-to-go. Lots of questions, this is kind of interesting, this one, question about roads. This is very typical failure rate on roads. If you build a road, for example, 2005, this is the typical deterioration rate. It goes about 30 years, if you do nothing, if you don't seal it, you do nothing, it's going to be really bad in 30 years. But what happens is you come in here, part of the way through to the minimum acceptable. This is a little bit different from roads because technically, the best way to do is that for seven years, you come into a chip seal, a store seal. And then you bring it back up, and you come down. You bring it up, and you can literally make a road last 60, 70, 80 years, especially down here. We don't have the breeze thaw like that to deal with up north. And so you can make, that's the same thing with water tanks. Water tank, it can come in here, and if you let it go, it's going to fall apart. But we found that if you go through and inspect it every 70, 10 years, and look at the coatings, and you can make sure the coatings are redone properly, there's tanks that are 200 years old on the East Coast. They're still going to function through because they've been properly maintained and repaired. So this is why making things last as long as you can to get the best cost for use. So, but then again, obviously, as you get to the end of it, sometimes you do end up, like with roads, you want to make them last so long. And then you end up having to full mag, well, dig them up, not totally be destroyed, because you can still recycle materials, and then replace it, and get a new functional life. Okay, long-term funding, this is, this is a big thing because you have a strategy. The way the state encourages people to do it is you start out in the fall with a capital improvement plan. They acquire a five-year plan, and then you submit that, and you ask for legislative funds, you ask for other funds. The state's pretty tough, you don't have something under the capital improvement plan, you're not going to get funding from legislature. It's a good thing, makes you think about it. What we like to do is we start earlier than that. You get your plan down, and you look at it in December, in January, make sure all the updates are given, and then you run that new spreadsheet to identify what your new conditions are, the new conditions updated by new thing. You run your capital, you run your critical assets list, and then when the budget comes around spring, something's immediate, you can take action in spring. And then you, you have that same, you have a 20-year cost projection. Then after you're done with your budget, then you take that, so okay, what needs to be added, you need to go on the capital improvement plan. You actually have 20-year legislative area down to five, and what you need to offer. And then you can do like, Water Trust Board starts in fall, legislation starts in fall, all those different things. And so it's a process, you do that, and then next you shuffle it. So it's a long-term role, you run the Water Trust Board funding, there's some great USDA funding right now for treatment plants. It's not as good as the Water Trust Board, sometimes it's 50/50. You still got to come up with, with sometimes 50% loan funds on top of the rent funds. But the loan rates are really cheap compared to interest rate right now. And so you can get, you can get five, 10, 50, 20, it's the biggest funding available from USDA. But if you have a strategy. Like I talked about, asset management, you start with policy, you assess your condition, you complete your plan, you implement your plan, and then every year you review it. Keep it at, you grow for continual improvement. So that, let's go quickly. And so what we're talking about is having a contract city to do phase one, and then implement the data deals, bring in phase two. You can come up with a complete list and the fixed asset list for all your assets. And then later on, there'll be a second phase, which you actually need to face three, is that, completing the plan. You'd actually be completing your plan in two years.
So Ross, and right now with, with contact with the city, you said that it's already in place or?
Commissioners, so we actually have money in the current year's budget, which expires on Friday, for all of these services. They don't have to go out to RFP. So Mr. Leo Wilson would come in and his team, and in one month, give us a top to bottom asset inventory. As a police chief, I looked at my department's asset inventory, and a lot of it hadn't been updated since 2017. So I imagine the other departments are in a similar shape, except maybe for vehicles, which Shands takes, keeps track of. But we are six years out of date. Mr. Leo Wilson, and not to mention, it was a deficiency found on our audit. Leo Wilson would come in for $25,000 and immediately, within a month, get us up to speed on all our assets in every department, including roads and everything else, I'm assuming, or is that later?
We probably do the roads, we would assist.
So that's $25,000. Russ's, this asset management program will be $50,000 for this year and $50,000 for next. For the two components, this year $75,000. We have the funds in the wastewater budget, Mr. Martinez had set aside. So it's wastewater, it doesn't comply with the purpose of the fund. And we would get up to speed and be in this program, it would be additional $50,000, and that costs a year. But I believe very strongly that this is something we need. It would be my job or the city manager's job to hold each department head accountable to keep up with the system. Because the problem with what Mr. Leo Wilson is going to do is he brings us up to speed and compliance. But the next day, that, I don't want to say it's obsolete, but the minute you make a $5,000 purchase, if you don't change it, then you're not keeping up with your asset management program. So I think we maybe need this program, I think it's an excellent investment. I would personally oversee it, the department heads, and take responsibility that it's, because it's only as good as what you put into it. I understand that. So I'd just say that the money is currently available.
No worries, I, I don't, you know, nothing against you, Ross, but I hate to jump on it, but it's an audit finding, and I, and I think if we can get it, something running by July 1, maybe that would satisfy our audit finding, and then we'll have that finding in. And I hate to put it, put it on the table like that, but.
Well, that's why I wanted to get in front of the commission tonight. Because FDR tells me that those funds are not going to roll over into next year's budget. That was set aside by Mr. Martinez. They're usable, able to pay for the majority of this program now. And then one more $50,000 payment, and then we have the program for life. And I think after that, it's minimal upkeep every year, a couple thousand dollars, something like that.
Yeah, what we do is, you guys talked about water loss also, I talked to city manager about this. Water loss, you guys have a water conservation plan, and that water conservation plan requires a daily analysis and a water audit every year. And I don't know that we had somebody doing that lately, we do that, we could actually do that, and updates on this under a technical service agreement. You know, for, we do a lot of things, we also allow official survey, we could have major mapping, and so all that, like less than $10,000, I'm not going to exceed.
Right. And the nice part about this program is it doesn't just tell you where you are, it's somewhat predictive in what you're going to have to replace in the future.
It's invaluable for your budget system.
Yes, and getting where you can't ask for anything without it. And having a machine for this and such.
So how much money do you have in that, that account, 75, you said?
No, there's much more than that.
What does it have to be used by?
Right. So that's what I said, I'm going to sign this company.
The thing is, you know, you have a code where things over $60,000, it's a kind of a RFP. We use the CES program, and then, and you can just sign a CES contract, like, yeah, it's easy to put together, if he offers him to sign. Offers him to sign it, and get this stuff signed by 30.
Yeah, that'd be good. And just for clarification, I'm currently consulting City of Livingston. I'm just narrowly employed, essentially I would provide my services as needed in this inventory. The goal being that City of Livingston's staff aren't able to pick it up through the training, but knock off parts of it. But again, there may be parts where, parts of it that they're not able to do, or they're not familiar with, they're not in the system. And of course, you are shorthanded in some departments, and if, you know, if you were to tell me, do this, hold in department, that's what I would do. It's hardly, I gave them a ball, pardon, 20, it's just hourly, it can be a lot less or. So it's really how much Livingston needs from the opinion of that regard.
Definitely needed some. Thank you.
I appreciate you so much, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Please, come on, Mr. Ralph. You might have some days.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, long meeting so far, so we'll move on. And then a quick discussion on interim city manager salary, because it is an action item later in, in this meeting. I will throw out my opinion, and then we, we sent out a, basically, a posting for our city manager. Put that together last week, and we put the salary range between 100 and 150, depending on experience, depending on whatever factors that we find. And having our police chief step up as the intro, then, I am totally open, but I'll just throw my opinion so we know. And then we moved him to the lowest end of that, of 100,000, because that gets him into the range, and it gives us something to go on from there. So I'm, this is a discussion item, so that we can move, when we get to that item, we can make the necessary motion and move on. So any other discussion, anybody?
I'd like to say, you know, I think, just like I mentioned earlier of our audit, you know, I think that we need to look at our employees at a higher standard and, and treat them as that way. And I feel he's worth at least 115, and, because he, he's out there, and he's, he's working the field, he's not just sitting in the office, you know, he's, he's, you know, I noticed Mr. Miranda, Miranda, he's, he's out there with the water department. He's in Hill, Texas, he'll keep us informed what's going on. You know, I just don't want to lowball it, just say 100, I'd say 115, because we, we mark, we're marketing for 150. And I don't want to put him at the very edge at the end, because he has, without him, I don't know who we would, we would reach out to, because we're limited on, on personnel that, that has the background, at least enough background, to keep the city running forward. And that's, that's my.
Any other discussion? Okay, I have, mine was a minimal, so I do encourage that, that would be a minimal for that. When we get to that point, I'll motion, and then we'll discuss it and go over. All right, let's start our action items. Floor is open for a motion on our action.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion for resolution 2023-057, variance of encroachment request on 9/18, West Monroe.
We have a motion in a second, Ms. Ball.
Commissioners, we had a request for a property owner who wants to build a car. What is going on? It's like, that's not the right thing. I don't know if we're going to find where our location is yet. Um, anyways. That's a single, well, is that last?
It's on our, on.
Yeah, I mean, you guys have it on there, I know you guys have it, nobody else is going to be able to see it.
All right.
Okay. Yeah, there's those slides on it, so. But we're all these, but I know these are all there. All right, um, he wants to build a 30 by 20 car. All right, he wants to build a 30 by 20 carport in his circle garage. And it would actually encroach the city right away by five feet, leaving nine foot at the, from the, where the encroachment would happen to the back of the curb. So there was, the city, the planning and zoning board looked at this and realized with the 14 feet out there, that the encroachment of the bike would not interfere with any sidewalks or utility upgrades that would possibly come into that area. With a large encroachment, the city has granted these type of encroachments and variances prior in the past. So the planning and zoning board did approve it with the conditions set forth. That, you know, basically, the structure is brought in and compliant or removed at the owner's expense in the event that any installation of future utilities or sidewalks or anything like that has to happen. They would have to then, of course, bring it up into compliance or remove it completely.
Well, it looks like his neighbors already jumped the gun.
Yeah, we've seen letters.
Okay. Any further discussion, Ms. Ball?
No, unless you have any questions for me.
Got some questions for, all right. No further discussion, Shannon, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
No.
Commissioner Dandy? Commissioner White, no. Mayor Roberts?
Yes, no? Permission again.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023-058, 810 West Avenue G, various requests for left foot side yard setback for carport and non-conferential home.
Motion second, resolution, I'm going to catch up. Where are we? Okay.
Mayor.
Discussion, yes, I'm sorry.
So the property owners at 810 West Avenue G, they originally came in for a curb cut permit for me. Upon my preliminary inspection, we found out that they had built a carport without permission. It does not meet the side yard setbacks. There is not an issue with the front at all, it is well within their property boundaries. What they did was, when they bought the home back in 2017, the house already had encroached the side property line. Whoever added on to the house before the 1990s had added on and built within a foot of the property line. So when they moved in, they added the carport basically in the nook of their home. And so they matched the sideline of the home. Not knowing that they needed a permit or that there was carport setbacks, they built one. So the planning and zoning board approved this with the conditions that they get the state permits that are required for a metal structure, which would require them to get some engineering and then get a permit to have it inspected and pass inspection. We have had other homeowners that we required these same requirements of when they met an issue with the side yard or the property owner to the adjacent side had no issue with them.
If they do, go ahead and get an engineer's stamp and everything, will this mean approval?
That's where they have to get that from the state.
Impacts and everything?
It doesn't meet the side yard setback, it meets the front ones, it's way off the front of the property. It's good 25 foot off the front of the property. So there's not an issue anywhere near our, it would be, it's the adjacent property owner that basically is not five foot away from that property line, but the adjacent property owner signed his petition to leave it as.
So if we approve tonight, he still has to get the stamp, right?
He still has to go through the process if you approve it with the conditions, just like the planning and zoning did.
Since that affected neighbor is already signed off that he's okay. My first question was going to be, is there any possibility of, we saw the picture, is it runoff or anything? Is the one foot is, is still left? Will it be able to catch runoff and everything else and not?
Affect his neighbor?
Not affect, even though he signed off, was that looked at?
I did look at that and the carport actually drains more to the front than the side. The house, actually, the slope of the roof drives slopes into their garden soft tube. So there's only one little edge where it comes within their property, but that one foot's enough for the water to put off the view on their property.
Any further questions, any further discussions? Shannon, roll call vote.
Commissioner White, yes. Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Yes.
Commissioner Bean?
No.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the resolution 2023-057, approval of EDC board appointment. Wait, wait, I got to have just a point, betting price, Steve Carr, Julia Myers, and Marla Price. We should cover the three Zimmers and the one member of ours. The rest is motion for 2023-058. Yes, they 587.
He's not wearing glasses.
I'm wearing my glasses, man, okay. I may have drinking.
Okay, do we make that clear? I'm figuring out a. Shannon, did you?
All right. I'm jumping out.
Okay, all right, we have a motion in a second for the appointment of these members, reaffirm. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Shannon, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023-060, acceptance of the 2022 audit.
Okay, motion in a second for the acceptance of the audit, any discussion, any questions? Hearing man, Shannon, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023-061, EDC professional service.
Okay, motion in a second for acceptance of this agreement.
Mr. Mayor, as we discussed last Thursday night, I proposed introducing all four organizations using Lager's tax with no exposure to the general fund. As of this time, we have agreements with EDC and Chamber. There are some discussions that we still have to have with Main Street and the museum. They were requesting some modifications to their contracts and I didn't feel comfortable, you know, without you guys knowing about it. And I think Manna may want to talk about that, but we're proposing to add money and there might be some changes that the commission may want to be aware of to their service agreements. So I would, we have all four of them for approval. At this point, I would recommend to approve Chamber and EDC and possibly either discuss or table Main Street and Museum for tonight.
Okay, and on the agreement, they do understand based off Lager's tax, so we have a dip?
Yes, sir, that's not even the point of contention. It's, it's the services they would provide to the city. And the descriptions in the service agreements.
And to me, it's, it's the money thing, it's just like, we've been providing them with 35, but any of, but on the conditions that if EDC, if Lager's tax goes down, they're paying. I just don't want some argument saying, hey, you've got a contract, you got to any of. And take away from the citizens just any of.
So resolution 61, I would recommend. Where's your answer?
You going to skip one?
No.
No. You said it right.
Okay. Apparently I barged $4, I barged before, you're going to catch up with. So, but on EDC though, that's not coming out of us.
No, sir.
That's coming out of us, sorry.
Just want to make sure. Okay, any further discussion, questions? Shannon, oh, Ms. Ball.
Are we going to change your motion, see if we can remove them too?
No, no.
No, we'll take her motions later in the meeting. So we'll just table those to like, clear up the paperwork there. So on the EDC one here, we should just vote through that one.
And Chamber.
Chamber, but it's not on this motion here.
No, it's EDC, right, it's EDC.
Shannon, roll call vote.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
So a quick question. Mr. Mayor, do we need to table it for one? You want to table it for two weeks till the next meeting? Or do we want to table the ones for Main Street down there?
I think we can approach an agreement by next week.
You want to bring it and discuss it, like, say.
I would as well.
And then we can.
Sure. It's just whether we're going to get it done this year, it's not a necessity to get it done before the end of this year. So, but if we knock it out, this is up to, you know, before he makes his motion and we get to discussion.
Can we motion discuss it?
I figured it'd save time since we already have so many other things on the meeting. Let's table those two, just because I'm all about time efficiency and there's 30 more minutes to hammer this up. So Mr. Mayor, I'd like to table with resolution 2023-062, Main Street professional services agreement. We have a motion to say table this resolution.
Till next meeting.
Till next meeting, correct, sorry, sorry about that.
Commissioner White?
I'm sorry, roll call.
Commissioner White, yes. Commissioner Pacheco?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
So we're good on the Chamber, right?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023-063, Livingston Chamber professional services agreement. Yeah, a motion saying adoption of this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, in this agreement, they have agreed to the condition, it represents no substantial change to last year's service agreement except for the increase to $50,000. So I would recommend to approve this.
Oh. Wow, a little oversight there. Okay, sorry, we got that, yeah. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve this. Shannon, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to table resolution 2023-064, Lee County Museum professional services agreement until our next meeting in July.
July. Second. Okay, motion saying to table this resolution. Any discussion? Hearing man, Shannon, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023-065, move Estacada CD to WSCV.
Okay, everyone's saying for this resolution. Discussion, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, upon recommendation by Ms. Wilberby in our last audit, this is found to be a deficiency, we would take one of the two CDs currently at Estacada and move it over to Western Commerce Bank to be in compliance with the audit.
Yeah, okay. Any discussion, questions? Shannon, roll call vote.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. Can you hear that? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023-066, approval of the budget fiscal year 23, of 2023 to 2024.
Okay, motion second on the approval of this budget. Discussion, you going to lead, city manager?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I know there's effectively two options before you tonight that we have to decide on. It would be my recommendation to move forward with the 5% loss of living raised to city employees. I know there was some concern at the last budget meeting about, on the high end, to touch none of our mummies in the general fund, GRTs would have to stay at 875,000 a month or higher. On the low end, GRTs went down, we took the whole 2 million, that would take the GRTs down to 704,000 average month. I know there was some concern because we're in interim budget year, it was Tracy's first budget. So it'd be my recommendation to go with the 5% raise, but to see, to track it closely with the department managers, see how they're spending in one quarter. We do a review with the commission to see if we're tracking the budget correctly and staying within the parameters. So you're more comfortable with that budget.
See, and I have a problem with that, I think that we need to reward our employees. Everything has been real based, organizations, new stuff and all this. And our employees are still making what they've been making, I don't know, some are making what my dad made when he retired, no, not. And I have no idea.
But I think, I think salary is very important. And I think, but also we have to consider that we introduced PERA and that took a big hit on the city, the insurance, the matching funds for retirement. And, but like I said, I'm all for the 5%, but 5% also increases PERA.
And overtime.
And overtime.
But I wasn't saying it's the way that we should start a new year.
I understand, but I know some have wanted to do that and I just, just agree with it completely.
But I think, I think, going back to the city manager's position, we just need to hold every department accountable for the budget. We set out a budget, it has to be budget, just like our audit finding with Deon said. We were fine because we went over budget and so, and there was no, and one thing, to keep the board informed on the budget, is when we make budget adjustments, and I didn't see that, I haven't seen it in a year. And I know what's going to happen at the end of this year when we get everything done, we're going to do a big, I don't think it's even happened, I think, that's, I know we're going to get an audit finding because at the end of the year, we're supposed to do a budget adjustment to put everything square prior to moving on to the next year.
We did, yeah, we did have one budget just.
That's anyway, no, because it's July to July, so we finished our year this, this week, this coming week. So we haven't done a budget just to put everything square.
We did not do one at the end of this, the current year, or we have not yet.
Yeah, we have not yet, but we have, we're supposed to.
But we can.
Yeah, we can, but that's going to be after July 1, not.
I realize.
So what I'm saying is that, so I went back to the budget, I mean, going back to 5%, no, I, you know, I think that's there. But I was trying to figure out other means to, to find a way to give them that 5% so it wouldn't affect their GRT and our revenue long term, but.
To put it in perspective, the last raise we got was in April 2019 and it was a 3% raise. And in the meantime, we lived through COVID, cutbacks and furloughs and a lot of inflation. And it's just, it's really hurting the employees.
And I totally agree, chief, but it goes back to the budget. You've got to follow the budget, period, there's no questions in it. And I'm tired of, like I was mentioning earlier, I'm tired of these excuses, I really am tired of these excuses. Because if we give the 5%, we go over budget, a million dollars, and plus we give them the 5%. So that's what I'm saying, that city managers plays a big, major role in keeping the budget intact. And if the department has reason to go over, I understand, but we track accordingly like we're supposed to. Stay on track, I don't have races, you know, every year, but we just can't give 5% also. Overtime goes off the roof and we're, now we're paying double in the year. You know, I've seen some areas where they're over 100,000 in overtime that we budgeted for. Some departments are, so I'm just saying, we have to, can't, you know, either do it right. It's my job to make sure there's no unpleasant surprises, take that, keep us in.
So you believe that it's possible?
Yes, sir.
So as long as you're in that position in terms of city manager, we'll make sure that all departments are accountable.
I'll keep them on track and we will be regularly to identify a problem before it's out of hand, we have to do an adjustment.
Any other discussion? Mr. Game, we will have to, we'll have to just state that, basically, that restate that motion to include because of uh because we have the two options, we just need to make sure that we covered the option.
Right.
And that option was the one for the five percent, we did, the other one had a clothing allowance, we discussed that in the meeting.
Correct.
So that shouldn't have been even on the table, I didn't think.
No, no, I agree with you there too, yes.
So you just want to do the, so you want to adjust my motion to uh add the, to include the five percent cost of living allowance?
Yes. All right. We have a motion, motion in a second on this, on the amended uh motion. Any other discussion? Shannon, you're clear, you're clear on, okay? Roll call vote.
Commissioner White, yes. Commissioner Trivio.
Yes.
Commissioner Danny.
No.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh sixty-seven, CDBG dash eighty-eight sidewalks and ramps, Second Street Avenue D to Central.
Okay, motion in second on the resolution. There's ball. Help wanted, you want help, huh?
No, not.
I don't know what that has to do with the sidewalks, but.
Yeah, I wasn't, that's what I'm saying, the, I don't know why I have my slideshow, but this is not what I had prepared, so it's all my stuff. Um so the grant writer was writing a grant for the uh trying to do the CDBG grant for the sidewalks along Second Street from Avenue D to Central. Uh in that area, I had a nice picture of what our existing ADA ramps look like, and they would need a, they need a lot of help to get up on those areas. So I'm just saying, we have non-existent ADA ramp areas. Um all along that street, um it is a a major street that's traveled quite regularly. And of course, with our ADA plans, the city, we're supposed to try to bring up all our sidewalks to ADA compliance.
So talking about that, I know I've mentioned it several times before, but before they, I know that the historian at Lee County would like us to at least save the concrete that has the, what is it, yeah, WPA stuff? You know, before we just take a jackhammer and bust it in my pieces, we would love to try to save that.
Yeah. Before we start that, we'll go in with the design, and we'll look for anything like that where we need to save those historic features and with that.
That'd be awesome, that'd be one less email I give. That was supposed to be inside voice.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions?
Well, she has a grant writer, she's the one writing, so.
All right, Shannon, roll call vote.
Commissioner Danny.
Yes.
Commissioner Trivio.
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes. Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh sixteen, the approvals of interim city manager's salary set at one oh five. Annual. And my thought process on that, before somebody second said, you said a hundred thousand, we're giving everybody a five percent.
Yeah.
A lot of thought there. Okay. Just a second. We have a motion in a second on this resolution. Discussion.
So that was my thought process before was, you know, if you started with, pardon, we are doing some training.
Right.
With the interim guy, so usually you start a lower position, but we are, since his salary is not attached to the regular pay, I can figure five percent for the hard work that he's done with, at least part of another thing, so that's how I justify that, so.
You know, I understand your point. Commissioner Danny, just, you know, when I see this, and I see that we don't have a trust, that the end of the, end of the year, uh budget increment, we got an audit coming up. The last time, it took us almost ten months to to get a new city manager. You know, I'll tell you one thing, and then plus, plus the restructuring, you know, we still have uh everything that's going on with the water, everything going on with the sewer. We're putting a lot on this plate to get the last, and we paid him a hundred and thirty to do all this, to get, better put an intern, a pretty guy, a guy that's been with, was loyal to the city and been with the city, and lowball him at one oh five, you know, I I think shame on us if we lowball him because we gave the last guy a hundred and thirty, and what did we get? You know what I mean? What did we get?
I I understand your thought process, but I disagree.
But I just don't, I just think we just better, I think we need to look, look at our employees a lot. I think that's why they're leaving us, you know, and the crazy part about they're leaving us to other municipalities, county, and because we're not taking care of our employees, and it's time to start taking care of our employees, showing what they're worth, and and also help holding them accountable, but I'm not gonna help somebody accountable for cheap, that's for sure. But if I, if I, if I am well, I expect more out of them, that's, that's more.
Well, and my opinion on this is, he is interim. Our our goal is to take this interim out by the first of October, so he would only be at that level. If he is the candidate that is chosen, then we're going to move. We start at ground zero and we go by his uh, by his qualifications, he will have experience and everything else, and I think that's one of the rewards.
There's still a learning curve, you get a city manager in here, and that's a month, there's still a learning curve for him, uh at least six months learning curve to find out where we stand financially, budget-wise, all departments, getting familiar with everything that goes on by the time he's ready to to really see what what he's all about. You know, we'll give him them six months, it could be December, maybe January, and uh we're gonna be paying him big time for for doing, you know, for just learning also, and that's, because I've seen it, it's just like Dr. Martinez when he come in here, he just didn't, you know, he got in here, but there was still a learning curve. It was still, first nine days, he was following me, and he was trying to learn everything that was going on. After that, he went on to do his thing, but still, I mean, even when he left, he was still learning everything that had to be, take place. And we got grants out there with that personnel issues right now. Uh I I just can't see how we, and and you know, that's what we thought, us three commissioners, we thought, oh, we have a city manager in ninety days. Oh, we hope it was ten months later, and we were like, and we we tried different options, and we finally found the right formula to get a city manager here, but we had to pay him a hundred and thirty to get here. And I'm I'm just, I keep thinking, December is probably one, that's, we, depending on who we get in October, I'd be, I'd be surprised. Last thing, we got what? Fifteen or something like that, narrow it down to like four or something like that, after background checks and everything going on, we ended with four, and we had to make a decision with the four we got. So I just, I mean, I just, but I would be in favor of one fifteen because we're putting everything on the shoulders. And all we do is show up, go here, make a decision, and we tell him what to do, and it's, everything's on his shoulders. And so when something fails, whose shoulder is gonna fall, him, not us. We're just gonna say, you get to do this, you need to do that, so I just feel that we need to set our standards a little bit higher, I'm sorry.
Do the numbers. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Shannon, roll call vote.
Commissioner Trivio.
No.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Commissioner Danny.
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes. Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you're right, yeah. Res, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh sixty-nine, advertising for city manager.
Okay, in a second. For approval of this resolution. Uh, I don't know, do you have? Well, it's just a statement, I mean, it's.
Yeah, they are.
Do you have any?
Advertisements going forward.
Everybody got a copy, if there's any discussion, we'll have it, if not, Shannon, roll call vote.
Commissioner White, yes. Commissioner Danny.
Yes.
Commissioner Trivio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. All right, Ms. White.
Make the motion, make bills.
I don't think we have a financial.
Financial, no.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in second to pay our bills. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, uh city commissioners, I can explain most of the large charges on here. Most of the wastewater large charges have come out of the COVID fund. I point out to Commissioner Bo that vendor one oh three, one oh three six three BSN Sports is lighting for the baseball field, courtesy of Lee County Electric. Also on page two, CNN Electric, the middle league fields. I've noted that Ms. Willoughby's uh fee is on there for the audit on page two. I've noted that on page three, thirteen thousand for GWC construction is out of operation cleanup. And I will note that on the capital projects report summary, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. That was to NMDOT for the Main Street Waterline Project. So that came in on June first, went out this week, last week.
Is that anything we can get a lot to work on? I think we do remember. It needs to be states down to all that.
We missed the Friday. Oh, we didn't, we missed the five day deadline, I'm trying to, but we already told Dora, and I think we'll be okay. She always likes to smell up people's things.
Should we figure out people work on that and lighting one?
Or?
Or make for the marketing, just so we can find that space.
Yeah, she is. She told me that we needed to go to the bank and say this, the bank said she's not a signer, that she can't go, so I have to.
Excellent, thanks, she just asked me, she says a card check, and she wants a check also.
Further discussion? You good, it's your line, Sam? All right, Shannon, roll call vote.
Commissioner, Commissioner Danny.
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes. Commissioner Trivio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to section ten dash fifteen dash one, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight subsection H two regarding limited personnel matter. Therefore, please.
Motion in second, go into closed session, Shannon, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes.
Yes.